Okay.
What?
It's Gordon.
Okay, I'd like to call it. I'm gonna say selectmen. The school board meeting, Sanborn Regional School District, to order for the sixteenth of October, two thousand twenty, two thousand nineteen. I'm in a good mood tonight. We have a couple of youngsters here. You pledge? Come on down, you're the next contestant in The Price is Right.
This is Colin and Katie Burke. They are sixth grade students at Sanborn Regional Middle School.
All right. All set? That's your allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the people of all we do change, our nation, under God and individual liberty and justice law. Hold one second, do you?
Colin and Kathleen. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Phil, is y'all set? Okay, motion on the minutes?
Move to approve.
So I can get a haircut. Discussion? All in favor? The manifest is working its way around.
France field trip.
Dee, handbuckin'. Hey Dee, been a long time.
Yeah.
You're one of the last ones left when I taught here.
I know, right?
Uh, there should be a microphone over there. No, okay, sorry.
I'm not loud enough, is that it?
[laughing]
Okay. So I'm here because I had some students approach me this fall because they're interested in taking a trip to France, and they've heard stories from previous students and pictures from previous trips, and I worked with a consultant to put together an itinerary that hopefully meets all of the needs of the kids and gives them a really great taste of history, lets them see some of the sites they learned about in the freshman learning community, and yeah, hopefully will be really the icing on the cake of their senior year or junior year, whichever year they are, but anyway. And I have one of the students who approached me, Emily Abney, so I don't know if you want to hear from her or...
Hello, my name's Emily, I'm a senior, and I've been taking French for all my four years at Sanborn, and personally, I have taken trips outside the country with school programs, and I think that a trip to France would be an incredible opportunity, not only for the students who speak French, because they could actually exercise their ability to speak the language in a new context outside the classroom. So I think the trip would be an incredible opportunity.
Questions, school board members? Need a motion? Motion to approve?
Second.
I think travel for teenagers is, to other countries, is phenomenal. Gets them out of the idea that we're the only thing that exists, and get to see how other cultures interact and live and deal with different currency and a different language would be a great experience.
So my question is just on funding.
Oh, funding, yeah, I mean, that's something that I've talked to students about even in the past few years when we didn't have a French trip, is they can't guarantee to make the entire amount on fundraisers, you know? Big sales just don't raise a lot of money, so I've encouraged them to, you know, either save money through summer jobs or, you know, asking for their Christmas or Hanukkah presents to be in the form of maybe helping them do the travel. But also, once we get together with the parents, figure out what are some fundraisers that parents feel comfortable helping with, but also talking to Vicki and seeing what we're allowed to do, because I don't want to step on the toes of the classes that already have certain fundraisers that are set up. I don't know if the ones that I've done in the past are actually allowed anymore, because I know that some of the rules have changed, so I don't know. So I don't really know what we can do as far as fundraising, but I'm certainly, you know, available to help with any of the fundraisers that we do now.
From your answer, I think that you're not thinking that you're going to the district for money, for funding, this would be self-funded for these students somehow.
Right, I've never thought that it was going to be funded by the district.
I didn't know that.
No, I figured there are other things that the district funds, but this is, you know, not one of them. Sorry, I misunderstood the question, I guess.
No, I'm just trying to understand what was being requested here.
I mean, if they wanted to, that'd be lovely too, we can turn it down.
All right, thanks.
So just to clarify, they're asking for permission to do the field trip per policy, but they will fundraise for the field trip?
Yes.
Or provide it through their own funds?
Right.
It's school-sponsored but not funded?
The same as the Polish trip has been done.
Exactly, thank you, Jim.
And it's how I've done them in the past as well.
Mr. Stack, do you have anything to add to that? I think I got that.
No, I would just say that that standard for all of our international trips has always been that way, that it's self-funded by the kids.
And just one more? I recommend going to Notre Dame, even though it's...
I agree, I'm very, I feel very fortunate that I got to see it before it burns, but yeah, we're gonna have to try and squeeze that in.
I would think, okay, thank you.
I mean, one thing I will say, just because Dee's not gonna toot her own horn, but I'm gonna do it for her with others, I mean, we have a number of staff members that volunteer to take our kids on trips fairly regularly, and you might be thinking on one hand, well, that's fantastic, they get to travel more, that's great, but they're working. They're working, they're working 24 hours, seven days a week, they're taking time away from their family to do it, and they're doing it because they have kids that really want to go, and Dee does that a lot, she's not the only one, we have several, so it's really just fantastic when our staff step up to do things like that for the kids.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vote? All set, okay, all in favor? Anima's. Okay, manifest is working.
Well, merci beaucoup.
That's it, thank you. Manifest's working way around, no nominations, no recommendations. Superintendent's report?
Uh, my report this evening will be relatively brief, I just wanted to, I want to save the time for the conversation around the portrait of a graduate, but I do want to mention that Mr. Angel and I have been working really hard on the budget, and we're looking forward to presenting the budget to the public at the first board meeting in November, and I encourage all parents and community members to attend that very important meeting where we explain more about the budget and the process that will be implemented while we go through the reorganization, which is also progressing very, very well. We are working hard with a number of people to start the process. We had a great professional development day last Friday where the teachers all met in their new school configurations for the first time, and that went very, very well. The feedback has been excellent. There certainly is, of course, the typical anxiety for particularly our paraprofessionals and special education staff, they'd like to know which school they're going to, and those decisions have to be made based on student need, and so we can't really clarify that until later in the year, but at least the classroom teachers are starting to align curriculum and have conversations about their goals for their team in the coming year. It was really fun to meet with the pre-K three staff as a whole group, because if you've ever worked or been in a school that's focused on early learning, pre-K three is its own unique environment for our youngest learners, and conversely, meeting with the four, five, six group is really fun, because they're gonna do some really great things for kids. I'm really excited to see what the four, five, six school does as a team, particularly around project-based learning and academics. They were right in some really great conversations right out of the gate, it was really cool. So I was really excited and had a great day with staff. I spent the whole day Friday with staff, as did Patty, and I just want to take a moment to thank Dr. Haynes for a tremendous amount of work to prepare for that day. She did an excellent, excellent job, and the feedback from the surveys and the staff directly to me was that it was a very positive experience to spend time getting to know each other and working together in a really fun and collaborative way. And the last thing I'll say is that we did a very large version of what's called the egg drop, and no, that does not have anything to do with soup, it has to do with, yes, that was supposed to be a joke about egg drop soup, it's one of my favorites, but Mr. Stack had this really great, yes, yes, I go to the walk and roll for Chinese food and I do like egg drop soup, but Mr. Stack came up with, or had used this activity in the past, and he did a great job of facilitating team building through problem solving. So they were all given an egg and they had to budget money and purchase items to build a container or vessel to drop the egg from the highest height without it breaking. Well, let me tell you, very few eggs broke. It really came down to budgeting that saved or defined the winners, and I was amazed, because one of the teams that won was the fifth grade team, and they did not spend any money. It was really cool to see them work through that and to see the teachers collaborating and problem solving to get this to happen, and finally get to the point where we had to skip from 10-feet-high drops to 16-foot drops because the eggs weren't breaking, and they just did such a great job, and they had a really good time at the same time, which is a good way to get our staff together and build culture, because there's gonna be some real heavy lifting at the upcoming professional development days.
Committee reports, policy.
Policy met on October 2nd, I was present, Mr. Heath, Mr. Broderick, and Superintendent Ambrose. The board had requested that the personnel committees' suggested revisions to the superintendent's evaluation be sent to policy, and since we've had a lull in the action on policy, we discussed policy CBI, which involves superintendent evaluation and goal setting and governs the evaluation procedure. The source and nature of goals described in CBI were discussed at length. No policy changes were recommended to either CBI or to the evaluation, however, we did decide a simplified draft of the evaluation form was needed. I have copies of that if anyone would like them, I assume it'll be forwarded to you eventually. So we do have copies. I would like to emphasize that I'm interested in resolving ambiguity concerning the source and nature of jointly established goals mentioned in CBI in an effort to clarify the policy for current and future boards, and my interest is entirely unrelated to the superintendent's superb performance. I asked Dr. Mr. Ambrose to contact the NHSBA attorney, Will Phillips, to obtain guidance for the committee, and he did send us some suggestions. The next meeting is November 6th at 4:45 in room 102.
So what are you saying?
I did ask Will Phillips to help me out, because I was a little lost about goals. I said, were they board's goals, because we have to provide written criteria, it's in the RSA, are they the superintendent's goals, because he has his own goals separate from the board goals, but it does say jointly produced goals. And I said, or are they just needs improvement types of things, like you'd get on your evaluation report as a teacher, they say excellent here, needs improvement there, so it's just kind of a needs improvement type of goal related to performance and not related to broader goals for the district, could be any of those three options, and Will said, yes, any of those are possibilities for jointly formed goals.
So I'm just gonna pause this, because we're going to be discussing this later.
Okay.
Oh, we are, okay, it wasn't on the agenda, so I wasn't going to go into it.
It's not in public.
Oh, I see, so anyway, the evaluation form we had from Taryn Laitel seems to be fine, and I have that with me. I think we could probably look at that at our next meeting, approve it, and discuss it, you know, if you'd like, but...
With all this gonna be discussed in our...
All right, that concludes my report.
The excellence and student achievement committee met earlier tonight, and I will summarize that, report on that at our next meeting, but I wasn't able to report at our last board meeting on the previous EISA meeting, so this is from September 18th, our September 18th meeting. At that meeting, in attendance, myself, Ms. Alessio, Mr. Fitzpatrick, Mr. Ambrose, Dr. Haynes, Ms. Levitt, Mr. Dawson. Mr. Dawson distributed information on available performance data. Additional results should be available next month. Discussion focused on the AP test results, which were largely disappointing. The scale is one through five, three or higher is a passing score. Eighty-seven AP tests were taken last year, with 23% of those receiving a passing score. That compares with 2018, 106 tests and 28% passing, and 2017, 89 tests with 31% passing. Ms. Levitt noted that not every student taking an AP exam has completed the course at the high school, because some students have to take those courses through V-Lax, and then they would take the test here. College board is offering more support to AP teachers this year, including assistance with standardizing the curriculum, so it is hoped that this will be helpful. Mr. Ambrose also emphasized the need for students to practice testing without the opportunity to retest, which would emulate the AP test experience. Ms. Levitt reported that feedback about the early learning program has been very positive so far. Overall, students enrolled in dual enrollment classes are on track to earn 835 college credits this year. That compares with 642 last year and 267 in 2017. The committee also discussed goals for the upcoming school year. The board adopted a goal of completing its goal from last year of mapping outcomes to resource allocations, and Mr. Ambrose suggested that the committee could support this goal by working on setting year-end expectations for elementary grade levels in reading, writing, and math. Included in the board goal was exploring report card options, so the committee discussed reviewing reporting systems as a possible goal. The district is also reviewing math programs with the goal of piloting one, and this was targeted as a possible third goal. These will be presented for adoption at the next committee meeting. We all discussed that at our meeting just before this, and that was a lively discussion. Let you know about that next time. Oh, our next meeting is November 21st.
November what?
21st.
21, where?
It's in room 102, they're all in room 102.
At what time?
At 4:45.
Can I make a comment? I just want to mention that one of the things that we talked about around the fact that more students aren't scoring higher on the tests for AP is that a lot of our students are opting not to take AP, they're taking college courses instead, and I just wanted to speak on behalf of Mr. Dawson, because he mentioned, I believe Mr. Dawson was there, was it Mr. Stack?
Mr. Dawson was there.
Yeah, yeah, it's been a while, so I'm speaking from memory, and I want to be careful, because it's for the record, but I'll say on my own, from my own point of view and speaking with Mr. Dawson and Mr. Stack, that the question is before the board and the community as to what the future is of our AP program, because kids are choosing to take college courses instead of AP courses, and we're going to have to have that conversation eventually, and what's tough is that the kids are voting with their feet, not their test scores. They're choosing not to take AP, and so we're having a problem where AP classes are running very, very low numbers, so we'll talk about that more in the future, and that's something that we will continue to discuss, because we are on the other side having fantastic results with students taking college courses both in the high school and at college campuses, and that's really exciting, so I just wanted to clarify for folks that, yes, we don't like where our AP scores are, but a lot of our students are choosing to do other things.
And I just want to clarify something, the superintendent's evaluation is a personnel issue, therefore by RSA it's non-public, it's not that we're doing anything funny or covering anything up, but because it's a personnel issue, by RSA, it's non-public, so just letting you know that. Facilities?
Facilities has not met since the prior board meeting. The next facilities meeting is November 6th at 3:45 PM in room 102.
Finance?
The finance committee met on Wednesday, September 18th. The meeting began at 3:44 PM. We reviewed and approved the meeting minutes of Wednesday, August 21st. We discussed a deficit in yearbook financing. Elektra Alessio volunteered to meet with the current yearbook committee to help them with budget creation and fiscal management and the relation to layout. Matt Angel will also meet with this year's committee to help with budget finance planning. We reviewed questions on manifest number eight, including computer purchases. Jamie Fitzpatrick questioned why some Mac computers are being purchased, and Thomas Ambrose explained that he approved the purchase of a Mac for Jody Guterman, and learned that Tech had ordered another one to replace a Mac that was at end of life. In the future, any Mac purchases will be approved through Tom before purchase. Jamie Fitzpatrick questioned the request to purchase 500 Chromebooks, and Matt Angel's reviewing this and will provide more detail. There is a plan, retirement plan for Chromebooks, it's a yearly plan, and so we needed more information on that. Jim Baker requested an explanation of the additional expenditures for the climbing wall. Tom Ambrose explained additional cost was for a security curtain. The climbing wall grantor that paid for the climbing wall has agreed to pay for the curtain. We reviewed August expenditure reports, the health and dental expense for the month was The August expense excluding health and dental were $739,291.49. We reviewed and approved budget adjustments, $15,000 was transferred from an information access account into an account for books, and also $19,099.77 was transferred per payment into specific FICA and retirement accounts. Matt Angel presented a presentation on estimated revenues and the estimated tax impact. At the time, the state budget had not passed. He stated the figures he used for state revenues were complete guesses. This was necessary to meet a deadline to provide information to the towns in order to get into a state queue for setting tax rates. Elektra Alessio questioned what will happen when the state budget is passed. Matt explained that he can revise the numbers in his report at that time, and Mr. Angel also reviewed the details of his report at the September 18th school board meeting. The meeting was adjourned at 4:34 PM. Next finance committee meeting is scheduled October 23rd at 3:45 PM, and it'll be in room
I just wanted to follow up, just to be clear for the public, so that there's no misinterpretation, there was a confusion at that meeting about the 500 computers, and I asked Mr. Ficker to clarify that, and I'm glad you brought it up, because I know that you've received the information, but we're one committee report out, and I don't want it to be that anyone to think that we bought 500 computers, we actually bought 50, and that's because the pricing is better when you buy more than a certain number, and certainly we have devices that get broken and go in and out of circulation and whatnot. The number 500 came in an answer to a question about the approximate number for quantity in the lower grades only, so we have 500 in the lower grades total, but we didn't buy 500, so I just didn't want to have there be any confusion in the public or for the voters or whatnot about how many, buying 500 computers is a lot of money, so we did not do that, we bought 50.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome, you're welcome, yeah.
Personnel?
Personnel met October 9th, Mr. Fitzpatrick, coordinator, human resources coordinator, Diana Rooney, and myself attended. Out of respect for the personnel committee and its oversight authority in revising the superintendent form, evaluation form, I updated the group on the policy committee's proposed draft, no revisions to the draft were made at the meeting. Ms. Rooney then presented a finished draft of the district's exit interview questionnaire. The questionnaire represents an administrative form to be used by the HR office, it's not a board policy per se. I believe the board will be sent a copy of the document, and any additional comments can be sent to the personnel chair, which would be myself. I don't know if it needs board approval, but we can certainly approve it if you'd like. We then discussed policy GDB, non-union support staff wage and benefits, and discussed that one. The administration is recommending changes to this policy, which was last revised December 2013. The personnel committee created a list of questions regarding recommended changes and also requested some statistical data. The personnel committee's questions and a draft of GDB will be forwarded to the policy committee. The next personnel meeting is November 13th at 5:00 PM in room 102 of the high school.
Are we getting into areas we're not supposed to as a board?
Sorry, I was ready to come in now, what?
I guess I'm questioning whether the personnel committee is getting involved in areas that aren't necessarily board matters, I mean...
Well, as I understand the process, committees will look at something, they may end up sending it to another committee, for example, if finance comes up with something that affects policy, they would send it to policy, and then it's brought to the full board. So only things can be changed by the board, not by committees. So because we're kind of weaved in with each other, sometimes the line isn't well delineated, and I can see what you're saying, because you've got a policy committee who is supposed to go over the policies, changes, recommendations, but everything eventually goes by the board. And it is kind of a fine line sometimes about what is a personnel committee's responsibility versus the policies committee's responsibility when it comes to a change in policy. I've always felt that the personnel committee, I'm gonna use that, could be the finance committee, could be whatever, if it's a change in policy, would then pass it on to the policy committee, who then would look at it, and any changes then would go to the committee, go to the board, to be any changes, and that's where they would, let's say, say their preferences or argue for their reasons for changes, if there are changes.
Well, I guess I raised the issue because as board members, the only employee we have is Mr. Ambrose, our superintendent. All other personnel matters are functions of the administrative team.
Well, I guess maybe...
I'm not saying we shouldn't have certain parameters that we as a board expect, I mean, that's part of our policies and procedures.
Okay, that's a different road than I was just on.
Right.
Okay.
I don't expect the subcommittees to be making any substantive changes without coming before this board, it's not their privilege to do so.
Exactly, and then you've also got the issue, and this is where, you know, it gets hairy, right, is that he is our only employee, we do not communicate at all with anything.
That's correct.
And let me explain that to you, ladies and gentlemen, the best way I can come up with is, the Board of Directors for Ford does not go to the floor and tell somebody how to put lug nuts on a tire, right? They have a Board of Directors who has a CEO who will then send that down the chain of command, so we don't go in and tell teachers, principals, vice principals, we have no if, ands, or buts about that. And the reason I also want to bring it up is because we get phone calls at home saying, you know, we would like this, or this is going on, we have to then tell the people, and sometimes this is hard, before you come to this school board member or any school board member, you have to go through the chain of command, because I have no authority to go and talk to that principal or that teacher or that guidance counselor, everything flows through him. So when it comes to a personnel issue, it can get dicey as far as is it his responsibility or our responsibility, and so far, we've been able to work them out in my few years that I've been here, but you're right, and it's a, it sometimes gets muddied, you know?
I should know this, but I don't. Do we have definitions and responsibilities of each committee in our policy procedure book? All right, I'm gonna take it upon myself to take a look at some of them, because I want to be sure that we're, I don't want to get into the weeds of stuff that we don't have the time for, never mind legally should, to be honest with you.
Legally should or the authority to do what is very valid.
Exactly, I mean, we've got to, okay, and I don't mean any bad thoughts against Dr. Brown, for example, who's done a yeoman's job on the policies, and to get those through, we've done, we've got a lot covered this year that I've never seen any board that I've ever been on handle that much volume and get it through, so she's done a great job, so, I don't mean to cast aspersions in the...
But it happens to be the policy committee we're talking about, yeah, and that's, you know, it could just easily be the finance or personnel or whatever.
Yeah, well, Jim, I can...
You can slap him upside the head.
I can reach him.
My money would be on you.
All right, like I said, there's a few that I thought, we have a lot on our plate this year, and I just don't want us to go off into directions that may not be meeting our particular goals and objectives as a board.
I'd like to make one comment.
No.
There are times when the board is asked to make decisions about students...
There are times when the board is asked to make decisions about students and teachers. So it's more than just having one employee.
Yes and no.
No, no, only if it comes to us through him.
Yes, but it's still about more than one employee.
If he comes to us with a dismissal of a student, for example, through his authority.
Or dismissal of a teacher.
But at that point, at that point, I just, just to be clear to everyone, the way that works is the superintendent would bring a student to the board with a recommendation regarding expulsion, let's say.
Or not.
Then you have to decide, did I do my job? And are you going to support that? Or are you going to side with the plaintiff, so to speak? And support them and not expel?
Or have a hearing.
Well, you know, you have to have a hearing.
You have to have a hearing.
You're at that point managing me. Your job at that point is to look at the facts of what I've done and what the recommendation is and what my team has done. And make a decision as to whether or not I've done the right thing. And typically, you would have board legal guidance for that, because I'm separate. Same thing with a hearing around a staff member. If I'm going to dismiss someone and ask you to remove them from their permission, from their position, you have to be separate from that, completely separate from that. Because it's your job to be basically the jury as to whether or not I've done my due diligence and the administrative team did their due diligence and done it in the right process. And again, you would have legal counsel for you to talk to you about it.
Then again, if you don't nominate them, we cannot elect them.
We cannot.
You could have a staff member that you.
That's different. That's not a dismissal.
Not a dismissal. It's that you just don't renew the contract.
Right.
So the only way we could hire a teacher or any other staff member if he puts in.
That's right.
But if he doesn't nominate them, it doesn't happen.
I know we're getting on.
I know. I didn't mean to.
No, no, that's fine, because now I want to add something, and that is, I'm sure we have all gotten calls from parents. And one of the things I have had to tell parents is, I may end up being a judiciary, if I can use that example. So if a parent comes to me with a complaint and they don't like what the superintendent or the principal has done or something, I can't, in a sense, get involved because I could end up being the decider, right? So I have to stay completely normal and say, go through the process. And of course, a lot of people don't understand that. It's like, you're the school board. He's our only employee.
I'll take a look at our definition.
So we really, it's not that we're trying to get out from under or whatever, but I could end up being one of the judges for a student or an employee, you know? So it's, school board people really have to kind of know their jobs, you know? Because it can bite the bite you pretty good. Okay, S S T.
The S S T Committee met. There's not a lot to report. They're working on the final tuition bills for special education and regular education, which should be firmed up any day now. I just received an email that they're still having enrollment fluctuations, which is typical at the beginning of the year. We do have a new director at the Seacoast School of Technology, and she's doing a great job of analyzing student support services in students with individual education plans to make sure that their needs are being met. I was very impressed by her leadership in that area and her active engagement in that work.
Seminary, I had nothing, Ellie.
Well, I have a side note if you'd like.
On the seminary?
I do.
Okay, no, that's fine.
Side note, it's an ancillary item to the seminary. The Kingston's Heritage Commission is meeting with the Board of Selectmen next Monday night to review and propose that the selectmen put on the seventy-nine E on the warrant, the town warrant. An item for seventy-nine E would give the town fathers and or mothers the opportunity to grant tax waivers for potential developers of historically renowned property. So I do plan to attend, and I will report back to you all about what transpires. We're hoping, the Heritage Commission and myself, are hoping that the selectmen will get a hundred percent behind that, put it on the warrant as a recommendation from the Board of Selectmen. So that's due for Monday night, just so you know, things are not stagnant.
I know I go overboard, but I was a teacher, sorry. What does that mean?
What, stagnant or ancillary?
I know what it means. I know what it means. But if, if the town, if there's a warrant article and they allow tax credits for development of historical areas.
What does it mean? It means that, let's say we have Jane Doe comes and wants to buy the seminary property for a hundred dollars. I'm going to put that up because they're going to take millions to renovate it. They may ask the town of Kingston for five or ten years of tax waivers.
Or percentages of their taxes.
Or percentages. My position is, and I'll tell you right up front, is that we've never received tax monies for the Sanborn property. And so even if.
Because it's tax exempt.
Because it's tax exempt as a school. It has been even long before it was part of the district as a private entity. It was still a seminary school. And so it would be to our advantage as a community to offer that incentive as a tax credit, whatever amount that's negotiated, as an encouragement for the developer to come in.
So they could end up with a ten percent tax rate, maybe the next year twenty percent, where they would pay twenty percent of the taxes. So anything we got in is better than the zero we're getting now.
Or it may be that for ten years, we get no more taxes.
Yeah, and that's up to them to work out.
But if that is developed, then you're going to have more ancillary services to support whatever housing goes in there, for example.
Now, that's a discussion. That is not what they're going to do.
I have no idea what they're going to do.
Okay, no, well, because you know this community like I do, right away, it's, hey, did you hear what they're doing?
I saw a Facebook post just now that we're going to have free taxes for ten years.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm just kidding, but I'm sneezing and talking.
But that's what I'm concerned about.
Not what I mean, no, on that property. But I don't know. I don't know what it's going to happen, but it gives us another negotiating tool.
Right, it's a discussion. Larry, what do you got on, buddy?
Okay. We had a meeting, the Budget Committee had a meeting on October tenth, Thursday, October tenth, right here in the high school. There, it was a discussion, well, let's start off this way. The new Budget Committee member, Vanessa Mathis, was introduced.
Matthias?
Matthias, okay. She was introduced, and at that time, a motion was brought forth, the RSA six seventy-one gives you a policy on how to select a vacant spot. And it was decided that that would be discussed at a later time. So right now, I'm going to drop that. Approval of amendments for the May twenty-third meeting. And Mr. Angel answered the Budget Committee questions that were asked. The next meeting is going to be October twenty-fourth, Thursday, October twenty-fourth, at seven P M. right here in this building.
One question that was asked.
I'm sorry, when was that again? I'm sorry.
October twenty-fourth at seven P M.
Just want to mention that the one question that was asked of Mr. Angel, and there was some confusion, just to clarify. We are hopeful that through the reorganization that we will be able to fund in the budget without a separate warrant article the movement of the office at Memorial School to the front of the building where it's far more safe. If you remember correctly, last year, I explained to the board that there was a two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-dollar price tag associated with that when I was hired. I went over and went through the process with Steve Riley and the vendor, and we got that down to under sixty thousand dollars. So I'm really thinking that we're probably going to be okay to do that, but I don't dare to say so until the middle school's done, because every time I cut something open or look at it, money seems to go with it. So I'm just going to wait until, we're going to take it slow, and we're going to do it right, and I'll be in touch. But my hope is that it will be funded through the reorganization. And again, it was originally two-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars. When we went over and went through the process, I was able to whittle that down to about sixty thousand dollars comfortably. So I'm confident in the future of that, but I just wanted to clarify, there are some members of the BudCon here, and I've clarified in correspondence as well.
There is those student council reports. She's been excused. And first public comments. Ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening. I'm Mary Seer from Kingston. I just want to make a comment and ask a question, which I understand you don't need to address. And in regards the advanced placement test results, for as long as I can remember, they've been substandard, they've been underwhelming, dating back at least a dozen years when I first started to track them. I heard some conflicting information. Ms. Mahoney suggested that part of the reason for the poor performance of passing grades of three, four, or five might be due to the fact that some students are using V-Lax for their instruction. And Mr. Ambrose suggested that the reason that the performance is down might be, or they suspected is, due to more students taking college courses through dual enrollment. My question is, will this data be published for general consumption? Will it be referenced in your subcommittee meeting minutes, perhaps? Because I can't reconcile the two. I can see them both being contributing factors. But just because more kids are taking dual enrollment doesn't necessarily mean the students that are taking A P classes will perform any less favorably. Do you understand my question in reconciling that? I'd just like a little more either published data or something specified in your subcommittee minutes that would make that more clear.
Why don't you give me a call, and we'll catch up. I'll fill you in. But yes, we can publish.
But if I have the question, there are likely others out there that have the same.
Yeah, I just don't want to get into the habit of answering questions in public comment. I'm just simply offering, if you give me a call, we can talk. But that information should be made a public and available, yes.
That's what I'm suggesting. Thank you.
I agree with that, yep.
Do haircut, Tara?
Right, see, I try to come incognito. Taryn Lidle, Kingston. So I also have a few things to say about the A P scores. Most people know I have students that have been in this district for several years, coming right up through the schools. So I will give you some things that I have observed as a parent, as a parent of somebody in A P class, and as a teacher. I think one of the problems that students at Sanborn have overall is very limited practice taking tests. And I think anybody who knows my educational philosophy, I am not a, let's take lots of tests and have lots of grades. My educational philosophy is actually in the opposite direction. But here on planet Earth, where people have to take high-stakes tests in order to get into a certain level of college, career, et cetera, the kids need practice doing that. And I feel like Sanborn does not give kids the practical exposure to doing that in a way that makes it a routine thing that they are comfortable with. I also had, did a quick search, and in New Hampshire, the average in two thousand eighteen for three or higher on the A P test was seventy-one percent. And globally, it's sixty-one percent. And those scores have been pretty consistent for the past decade. So there's clearly, there's clearly an issue here that needs to be addressed. I will say, in addition to kids just not having the exposure to tests that I think they need to be successful, I think there are ancillary student skills that need to be explicitly taught from a very early age, like third grade, when it comes to close reading, note-taking, how to study. These things do not magically happen. And for kids to then get to high school and have these expectations of these tests and S A Ts and P S A Ts and everything else, and then there's this big shock and awe that the kids aren't doing well, it's really a burden. It's not a factor of all of a sudden in ninth grade, you know, the ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth grade teachers are terrible. Study skills and note-taking skills and close-reading skills are taught very young and have to be reinforced in every class, every year, consistently, until it's second nature for the kids. And I can say, having my own students in middle school and high school, it is not second nature for them. And I have very high-achieving, smart kids. These things have to be explicitly taught. I teach technology as my profession. People think children magically know how to use technology. They do not. They need to be taught these skills and how to use things appropriately. And student skills are no different. The things that we take for granted as adults that we knew how to do when we went to college, I see students really do not know. And it's because it is not being explicitly taught, because there is such an emphasis on the content without the student skills behind it to master whatever the content is. So that's my anecdotal observations. Thank you.
So I think it's important to just recognize that, I just want to clarify. Tammy did say that I said in the meeting that test-taking skills and having high expectations for regular tests is really important. That was part of her report. What I was saying about students voting with their feet and taking college courses is that we're having trouble filling A P classes, not that that's the only reason. So I'll say that much, Mary, to your point. It's a reason. And there are a lot of issues with this process that need to be addressed. And certainly, I think it would be fair to ask Mr. Dawson and Mr. Stack to present at a board meeting about what's going on with it. But I want to give the I S A Committee a chance to continue their work on what we're doing about it. Certainly willing to put that on a board agenda and have a conversation about it. That's not a problem, right? It is, it's a problem. It really is. And it has been. I'm agreeing with that one hundred percent. Yep, I don't, I just want everyone to understand that Ms. Lidle and and Mary's points, Mary Seer, are legitimate, valid points that we need to take into consideration. And frankly, Ms. Lidle, I agree with you one hundred percent, that you have to practice those skills. If you had been in the I S A Committee meeting or these last few board meetings, I've been saying, that is critical. You get good at what you do. If you don't practice taking tests, you're not going to be good at taking tests. If you don't do authentic reading every day, you won't be a good reader. If you don't practice math skills, you will not be good at math. It's that simple, right? So we're working on this, and it is a legitimate goal for us to work on. And I just want everyone to know that we hear you, and we recognize that it's important.
I think Cheryl beat you, dude.
Cheryl Gannon from Kingston. I'm not really sure I understood the information that was presented tonight about the seminary, but I am interested in finding out more. And was wondering when the selectmen's meeting is, if this is going to be.
Next Monday night.
Next Monday? At what time?
They start at quarter seven. I have no idea what time we're scheduled on.
And this is Kingston?
It will be posted in the town hall.
I don't know whether they have an appointment or not. All I'm going is to support that.
No, I'm just saying on the bulletin board is the time, the agenda. It's posted Friday.
And is Mrs. Alessio going as a representative of the school board?
Yes.
Well, no.
Yes and no. I'm a representative of selling that building. That's where I'm going. It's hard for me to delineate because I spent a few years representing the town.
This has to do with historical area and tax credits. Coincidentally, we have a seminary, but they're not connected. So it really wouldn't be, should we have her represent the school board? It's really has nothing to do with the school board. It's got to do with the tax credit.
It's not the only problem.
Later on, it might be the seminary, but right now, it's the historical, the heritage people asking, can we get a tax credit?
So Cheryl, to answer your question, which you've asked me many, many times publicly, and I totally understand your hunger to know what's going on. As soon as there's something to know about the seminary, I swear I'll call you. I promise. But right now, there's nothing I can publicly share. I can tell you that there's a lot cooking, and that's it. I'm sorry. It's all confidential.
You don't need to call me personally. I believe that the.
I know you do.
People who, you know, live in these towns and belong to the school district have an interest in that building.
They should.
Not just people in Kingston.
Yep.
It belongs to the school district, so it's both communities.
Yep.
Thank you.
Hello, hi, Tammy Gluck from Newton. I guess summer vacation's over, so I decided to come back to school. But I wanted to kind of just agree with Mary Seer and Karen's points regarding A P. One of the first conversations I had with Tom Ambrose when we met was concerning that. And Sanborn has been good for both of my kids, but. Sanborn has been good for both of my kids, but their AP test scores weren't as great as I would have liked to have seen. And I think one of the challenges we face with our AP classes is our schedule. So if you can make that a note as well, and, and how our scheduling affects the amount of time our students have in class to absorb the material, especially with AP Lit, AP US History. Those are some of the two hardest exams a student ever takes in high school. So that's my comment. And then.
In one little, you know, if you put like a little postscript on this, everyone needs to know that, that the year that your children took those courses, we had eleven snow days, which made it even worse. So last year was a lot easier with three snow days, but they really did. Tammy and I had many conversations about that. And I just want to be clear that it is unusual to have eleven snow days that fall on your kids' AP days. That was bad.
My son did not though, when he was here. But in the, in the other point I'll make about that is, and, and AP is concerning. Take the time to look at what other school districts do. And summer boot camps, things like that. So that's all I'm going to say on that topic. And then the other topic is just relating to the seminary. I have been on that committee several, several times for many, many years. And it will be interesting to see where things go as we move forward. And if you need my services again, I will volunteer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on. Academic calendar.
Um, you have a copy of the academic calendar and I, with Dr. Haynes, would you like to kind of share? Dr. Haynes came to me with, I'm, I'm starting, I'm trying to find Haynes plans. She had some plans for next fall that, that she wanted to, to implement. And I thought they were great ideas. So I'm actually going to let her explain to you, there are some changes in the academic calendar that are a one-year change that are directly related to the reorganization.
Precisely. So you're going to see in the calendar that we're actually bringing back the teachers a little bit sooner than we normally would. And what we're doing by bringing the teachers back on the twenty-fourth of August is giving teachers time to settle into their new buildings, new classrooms, new routines, have additional meetings with new colleagues, all those things to prepare for the school's reopening. We're also looking at sometime between the twenty-fourth and the twenty-seventh to have open houses for all the families to visit the new reconfigured building. So Bekey, the pre-K through three, we would have an open house on a date in an evening to be determined. Same thing with Memorial, grades four through six, open house to be determined. The middle and the high school students coming up here to see the actual facilities to sort of get the anxiety out of the way. What's this going to look like? Where am I going to be? What's my classroom look like? All of those things get worked out in those four days between the twenty-fourth and the twenty-seventh. The twenty-eighth, we would have as a day away from work. The teachers would come back on the thirty-first of August to get prepared for our students returning on September first. So it looks a little different. But what we're banking on is a New England winter where we're going to have snow days. Gee, I wonder where we could find some of those. And park those, those snow days at the beginning of the year instead of waiting till the end of the year where we really don't have use for that time, where we're really trying to find things to do, where we're actually going to need that time next year to make sure that that reorganization goes well for all of the students, all of the families and all of the teachers who are involved. So that's the purpose for the teachers coming back so much earlier in August of twenty twenty.
So, so I asked Patty a golden question that I'm assuming you're probably thinking, and I just thought I'd say this one before we open it up for questions. I said to Patty, what happens if we don't have a single snow day? Like, like that's not going to happen. But what would happen is the kids would go home with the teachers on the last day. If we have one snow day, the teachers have an extra day after the kids leave. If we have two, they have two. If we have three, we will have at least three. When it starts to get to five or eight, then we start looking at extending the students' time and then having staff after. Normally, we have some time planned at the end of the year after students leave. We move that to the front of the year for the purpose of supporting the reorganization. But I have to say, there's a part of me that thinks this might be a good template to kind of try this year and have a conversation about in the future because what we find is that we often end up with too much. Remember my first year, those of you who are on the board, there are five of you. I, I had to really scramble and ask you for permission to let me have teachers do work outside of the school day because we literally ran out of calendar days. The same year with the AP classes that, that Tammy brought up. I mean, it was really hard. So if we preload a couple of days, we get things done and ready. And the likelihood of us getting through a New England winter without a handful of snow days is very, very low. I mean, the fact that we had three last year was very unusual. So I, I'm just saying that I, I certainly support this calendar and I think that Dr. Haynes has put a lot into, a lot of thought into the academic component of our transition. And I'm inclined to support her request, but we're asking for your support and adoption of this calendar.
Still moved.
Second.
Is there a cost associated with these ex? No.
Same number of days that the teachers have in their contracts.
I, I think it's a great idea to
Thank you.
Open houses particularly, but also for the for the teaching staff and everybody else. They're, they're in a different building. They're working with different people. It allows them to get their, their feet solidly on the ground and prepare for the incoming. I, I think it's a good idea.
Thank you.
I think it's also important for the public to hear. Although we haven't been talking about it much here, the reorganization is moving along at a very, very quick speed. Any day now, the main office at the high school for the new middle school main office, ground will be breaking on that. They'll start working on that when students aren't in the building. Um, we're just waiting for a fire permit. As soon as it comes through, that's going to happen. I mean, we're really, we're working. We, we are, we are having conversations and I need people to understand that this work is moving forward. Next week is our first stakeholder, or what is the term we're using?
It's the, it's our first focus group with stakeholders.
Our first focus group meeting is next week. Right? For parents. So, and they've been assigned groups and, and organized and their, their goal and the topic of conversation is for them to pose questions and offer feedback and ideas for consideration by the administration. They don't make decisions. They don't have authority, but they have the ability to sit down and talk about things that concern them. And, and certainly I would invite any of you who've had curricular concerns this evening to share those concerns. Right? The, the public folks. You guys will have a chance here to do it here. But it'll be good for the focus groups to meet, and the principals are facilitating those groups. So we're really looking forward to getting that started.
Further discussion? All in favor? Don't go away.
Need my computer.
Thank you.
So while we're getting the technology straightened out so that I make the most of our time, I have been involved in a project that we're working on in the district along with Mr. Stack and a number of others in the district on something called the Portrait of a Graduate. And Brian is right now handing out a document that shows a couple of the changes to the different versions of the Portrait of a Graduate. And I want to just walk through the process for the portrait, what the purpose of the portrait is, and how this all sort of ties into the work that we're doing in the district. Particularly now when we're looking at Sanborn twenty twenty, we keep referring to Sanborn twenty twenty as the time when we're going to have a different vision. And we're really using a play on twenty twenty as in twenty twenty vision to talk about what do we see coming down the road for us? What are we preparing for? What are we planning on? That's probably me, but it's not showing.
Where is that? What's the picture of?
There we go. Okay. So, so the Portrait of a Graduate. So I'm, I'm going to explain a little bit about where we are, what we see, where we're going, and what this Portrait of a Graduate work actually is. So just to give some background, then there was a survey that had gone out to the community at large to give us input on our first draft. But a Portrait of a Graduate is something that different districts across the country have been beginning to create. And it's an overview of skills and competencies. And this is not only cognitive skills, but also personal interpersonal skills that we believe that our students should have when they graduate our system. Anything that these students might need to be successful in education, in work, and in life beyond our walls. Once they leave us in twelfth grade, they're out in the world. And we want to basically say to the world out there, this is what a Sanborn graduate is. This is what they're made of. This is what you can expect when you hear about a Sanborn graduate. The portrait provides a very clear visualization, and it's a visual. And right now, we're going to be talking about the words, but the words are going to be transferred into a visual of our priority goals for teaching and learning. That is an easy way for us to communicate to parents, faculty, staff, other folks in the community who may not have students in our system so that everybody can be working toward the same ends. Our efforts are all going to be going in the same direction. The portrait is really a visual representation and an explanation of what our graduates are and what they're able to do and what they have. The Portrait of a Graduate and the definition of student success that was adopted by the board last year are two halves of the same whole. These two pieces work in tandem to form the new vision. And there's your Sanborn twenty twenty. So that we know where we're going as a school district. So that when we start doing our strategic planning, we can rely on not only the portrait, but also that definition of student success that act together to help us figure out what are we doing as far as budgeting is concerned? Instruction are the things that we're doing in our district in line with those documents together. So it's critical for us to understand that those two pieces work together. As a former science teacher, I used to have to explain to students things about genetics. And so you're going to get a really quick genetics lesson, but trust me, you're going to understand a lot once we're done. You've got two terms in genetics called genotype and phenotype. Genotype is the type of genes you have inside of you. We don't see the genes, but they're inside of you. Just like our definition of student success, we don't see all that knowledge that's in our students' heads. But it's inside of them. Phenotype is actually what you see. Your genes are telling you to have blonde hair. Your hair is going to be blonde. Your genes are telling you, you've got a birthmark in a spot, you're going to have that birthmark. The phenotype is what you see. The portrait is the thing that's going to be how our students behave, how they act, what they're doing out in the world around them. Are they able to have conversations with others? Are they able to be personally responsible? So that's the, the combination of our definition of student success, the internal academic knowledge and skills that they have, in addition to the portrait, which is what we're going to see in some of our behaviors and competencies that our skills, that our students will have. So portraits of a graduate answer important questions for a community. And it's important to understand that a portrait of a graduate really looks at what the community sees for the future. What are the hopes, aspirations, and dreams that our community has for our young people? It's going to be a very different world in five years from now than it, than it is right now. And I think back to the iPhone creation. And how about last year when the students who graduated, and Brian Stack has talked about this, when the iPhone first came out, they were in first grade. And the world has changed tremendously since the iPhone's been being used regularly. What do we have coming in our future? We're not sure. But we want to have hopes and dreams for our students, for our kids, because that's what's going to be in the world out there once we're done with them in school. What are the skills and habits of mind that our children need for success in this rapidly changing and complex world? Things are changing so fast. What do we need them to be able to know how to do and be able to excel in when they're out there in that world? What are the implications for their learning experiences and equitable access that we provide in our school? How do we ensure that all of our students have opportunities? Every student has an opportunity to learn, and we want to make sure that those are in place. So the process we went through really had several phases. The first phase started with Brian and I sort of taking this in two different prongs and having conversations with stakeholder groups both in May and June this past summer. We met with students at all levels, elementary, middle, and high to ask them what they thought they would need when they got out of school. Parents of students of all ages met with us, as well as staff members, community members, especially business owners in local areas. And we had a subcommittee of the board, the ISA committee, meet and talk about what they thought they saw as important to being part of the portrait. Once we collected all of that information, we had lists of just these items, lists and lists and lists, looked like grocery lists from all these groups. And in August, we convened a group that included representatives from each one of those groups. So we had student reps, parent reps, staff, and board members and community members all meeting in this room to talk about those lists and to sort of boil down what those lists were saying and to come up with what we thought was our portrait. We presented that first draft to the community for input via a survey, and we collected all that survey data and reviewed it. Based on the review of the survey data, we came up with a second draft that we presented. And ISA took a look at it, and additional recommendations were made, and a third draft was created. And Brian passed out to you a sheet that has the three columns on it that shows you the differences between the initial draft that was created in August with the stakeholders, the draft we had sent out in September, after, after the, after the survey results, the September draft was created. And then this last version, which is today's version, which is in that last column. What we're asking for today, and you've got the draft in front of you, and so we're just going to skip that one, is for us to take some time to discuss this. The only way that the Portrait of a Graduate is going to work is if the entire community understands what's in it and agrees with what's being presented. Because really, it's a representation of who we are as Sanborn. Not who one person thinks we should be, but who we all can say this is really what our students are going to be able to do when they leave us here in Sanborn. So at that, I'm going to open the, the room up for discussion. Chair Bradwick, I don't know how you want to proceed with this, but I think it's time for us to have a discussion about the portrait. Okay. Good. That's what I saw. Yep.
I wasn't, Patty and I didn't talk about this the same part. I'm sorry. I just wanted to, my, my feeling was Patty came to me last Friday and said, we have a relatively light agenda for the school board meeting on Wednesday. Can we talk about a first draft of the Portrait of a Graduate? So I want everyone to understand that we're not asking the board to adopt the Portrait of a Graduate tonight. We're asking you for feedback, some of which you've shared via email or phone conversation some. But this is the time for you as a board to offer your input because ultimately, we have to come to consensus about a, a Portrait of a Graduate that we can, that the board will adopt. Right? So it's important that, you know, it's gone through a lot of process. Chair Broderick, if I may, I, I would recommend that, that you, Ellie was the board representative that attended the full day. She might want to share some thoughts or feedback. I don't know if you want to start us off, but.
Well, I was going to start actually with Jamie and just go right down.
Just go right around the room.
Unless you feel you have. Jamie, any comments, ideas, suggestions?
No, none.
Just kidding.
I know. I almost fell over over there. Thank goodness I'm holding on.
I'm quite impressed. I figured it'd be the longest.
Were you in the ISA meeting with me about an hour ago?
That was the bad twin.
Oh, oh.
No, Jamie wants him to stay there.
I had some concerns, and I shared them with Tom, and we just talked about them in the ISA meeting. So I'll just go by the boxes, the first row. I was quite pleased to see the academically prepared section added. I think it's important to be talking about knowledge and content of the portrait of a student. We want a lot of these other items also, but we also want to ensure that they're leaving with, with knowledge, content, and capability in the basics that we're educating them to. So I was very, I was very glad to see that included. I liked the rephrasing that has gone on in the self-awareness. One of my original questions that I sent in in the survey was I didn't understand the, the concept of thought ownership. It just didn't resonate with me as to what we were trying to get at. I think accountable for thoughts and actions is more concise and direct, and it's, it's more understandable. Creative innovator, that doesn't look to have had a lot of changes to that, some repositioning. The area that I had the biggest angst with was with Global Citizen, and I'll explain why I had angst with that. One is immediately if you're saying Global Citizen, by definition, you're not saying American citizen, so why are we saying Global Citizen rather than American citizen? In discussions with Tom as to what the intents were and what different aspects are included, the intent is to make sure that these students leave and understand they're working in, walking into a world of global competitiveness in which they're going to have to face. It's not an insular world, you're not living in a isolated block, you're not living in a bubble, you are living in a global world, like it or not, and you're going to have to deal with different aspects of that global world. The problem I had with Global Citizen, the phrase Global Citizen, is a very, in my opinion, laden phrase, and that laden phrase is a political philosophy. It is a trademarked comment. There is an organization called Global Citizen. They participate very actively in different types of politics, and those politics are generally on the left. I don't think that we should be in any way indicating that a portrait of a Sandborn graduate should be somebody that leans left or has particular political philosophies. I don't think that that's appropriate. I, I think global aware is better. Although I don't particularly care for that either. So I, I had put some thoughts together, and I sent those to Patty earlier, and if, if the issue was the ability to compete, my comments were, so we want them to have the ability to complete, compete in the global marketplace, and what does that entail? It entails positively interacting with others in a respectful manner, collaborating effectively to achieve goals, actively listening to other perspectives, polite and professional interactions with all people, groups, and communities in the global marketplace. To me, that makes, that makes it much more clear, much more concise, and not open to interpretation. In the discussions that we had in ISA, there was no intent for relating anything with political beliefs or concepts. I completely believe that. However, as I was reading it, and potentially others, Global Citizen is a politically laden phrase, and I'm glad to see that out, and I'd like to see it even more tailored along the lines that I commented on. Those are really my, my big takeaways from, from this. All right.
Well, actually, I like Jamie's idea. I like that Global Citizen, I'm glad to see that's gone. Globally aware, I'm kind of, yeah, one way or the other.
I like your definitions of it.
Thank you. And that's really the only thing I have to say.
I couldn't pass up an opportunity to talk, Rick.
I'll give you, you've talked.
Since I was, I was there all day on the day we had all the different stakeholders, one of my colleagues here in the board was not able to be all day, but it was a fascinating experience for me personally, and I learned quite a bit about us and the people in our district. It was fabulous. I'm a little uncomfortable about a couple of things, and global, globally aware is one of them. I don't, I, I never thought of it from a left-wing perspective, I'm certainly not on the left, but it's, I, I don't want to lose sight of the word citizen. It doesn't have to be global citizen, I don't, I'm not wed into that two phrase, because if that's a trademarked for a political organization, I don't want, I don't want us anywhere near, I don't want, anywhere near it. But I, we do need to incorporate citizen and citizenship somewhere into the portrait of the graduate, because one of the discussions that, that day when we talked about a global citizen, we talked about a person who takes responsibility for his or her community, state, nation, and, and so forth. It, it was more than wanting to denote a bigger picture, because we're not myopic anymore, we can't be, we're not, we're exposed to so much. We watch wars on TV or, or on our phones for crying out loud, we're streaming live presentations all the time. So that to me says we have to somehow incorporate that bigger issue and the responsibility we as individuals take. Doesn't have to be global citizen, I agree with that, because I do not want a negative connotation. So we might need to work on that one a little bit. In the other area that I have a little concern, I like the fact that we did add in academic, an academic component, but I just, I don't want us, and then we talked about this, a couple of us, as we were coming out of the ISA meeting, it, we, I don't want those that are not going on to college to feel excluded, because when we prepare an individual leaving Sandborn, they should be ready for a variety of perspectives, whether it be a post-secondary education, whether it be military, whether it means the trades. I mean, the trades, for, for many, can be much more lucrative, never mind rewarding, than academic success, if you will. It doesn't preclude, it doesn't, one does not negate the other, I guess is where I want to go. So I, I think that needs a little more massage, is my opinion in that. Of course, I was, one of the stakeholders, I love everything else. And I'll be real honest, because we, we work very hard at it, and so those two areas that could need a little more massaging.
I've, I'm very impressed with the evolution of this document, and the, obviously, a lot of work has gone into where it is now from the first draft. I was concerned when I read the first draft in August that this was just a bunch of language that was really kind of high-minded, but how do you measure whether or not you're actually imparting these attributes? I still have a little concern about how we measure the success of, you know, from period to, from one period to another, of whether these, these are actually being accomplished. But I think bench, some kind of benchmarks could be established to do that, and you need that in order to know whether you're wasting your time or not, and how to tweak things to make them work better. I was also concerned that we're a teaching facility, and there was no reference to academic performance, and I understand that these tie together with the student success definition, but you wouldn't know that if you just saw these documents separately, but now it's definitely tied to the student's success definition in that first block, and I'm very happy to see that. And I think that that kind of addresses what you were talking about, Ellie, where you don't want it to be just about college kids.
Right.
Because that definition of student success encompasses much more accomplishment than just college students. I would like to see the word proficiency in there. It's part of our evaluation system, it's part of PACE. This is just a suggestion, where it's a, in that first block, where it says academically prepared, and under that strong foundation, and proficiency in core academic content. And then that ties it into our PACE and our competency-based education. Otherwise, I think it's great. I'm really happy with the way it's progressed.
The reason I say that is because actually, I went to a class about how to run meetings, and it started going down, and I would kind of like to keep that process going. And, and I will give you a second to speak at the end, sir, if you don't mind. I'm sorry. Why am I feeling bad? I'm going to hear about this next meeting we have, aren't I? Yeah, well, and I was hoping you'd buy lunch.
So I, you know, I have similar sentiments that were previously expressed. I had a very strong reaction when I saw the draft that we were asked to complete the survey about, and my feedback was that I thought we needed to include a reference to academics, and we needed to tie it to our definition of student success, because I understand that it was assumed and sort of, I guess just assumed, that those, that an academic foundation was sort of underlying this portrait of a graduate, but I don't feel comfortable presenting this to the community without that component included. So I am very happy to, that that was included in here. And I had similar, I had similar feedback also in the survey, my, when I filled it out, in terms of how this will be measured and how we'll be able to determine whether we've actually hit these targets. And I, I don't, yeah, okay. What's going on over there?
Microphones.
Sorry.
So when he can't speak, he'll be able to.
Well, okay. So I would like to see, I would like to get some information, I'd like to have that presented at some point on how we know, how are we going to actually know that you hit the targets? I understand that this is like the North Star, you're going to kind of back plan to meet, to meet this and develop this, these students who meet, are able to demonstrate this, these qualities, but I would like to know how we are going to know that we've done that.
I've been bringing notes with me about this planned document for many weeks now, and I finally get to speak about it tonight. This document worries me quite a bit. I've been calling it Portrait of an Angel for a while now, because it is a little bit preachy. For example, makes healthy choices, should perhaps be, is educated about healthy choices, because donuts and fried clams are good, too. It also is a step back from Bloom's taxonomy. It uses words like accepts or thinks, these are not action verbs, I mean, they're more, less easy to provide evidence for, they're, they're not demonstrative action verbs, accepts and considers feedback, again, it's not really a Bloom's taxonomy concept. At best, I think it provides an innocuous supplement to our career and college readiness framework for student success, approved in June 18. I'd ask why this document is actually needed and where we're headed in terms of programming and expenditures, since it's been characterized as a potential guide to our, modernizing our strategic plan. I've attended three stakeholder meetings on this proposed North Star document. I've spent dozens of hours researching related topics such as social, emotional learning, intelligence, restorative circles, and restorative justice in education. Bottom line is, I, I have some other comments here, but bottom line is, I suggest we retain our current framework for student success and add a preface which could simply amend, be amended to highlight the qualities of our acronyms, Sandborn and Pride, which are designed to list the attributes we're looking for. We could add our graduates exemplify the correct characteristics of Sandborn Pride, and we can list what Sandborn represents in their personal and professional lives, attach that to our framework, and leave it at that. The origins of this document, I think, are an effort to place soft or social skills and traits on the front burner in education. The main argument for this appears to be, and I know I'm going to get pushed back on this, but I'm just going to say it, that the hard skills and content knowledge that we traditionally have taught in grades K-12 have a much shorter light half-life or period of usefulness due to the pace of innovation. And as you can see from this, it took many decades for the telephone to be used by 90% of the population, whereas today, the internet and the cellphone, very short amount of time to adopt new products. So I understand the goal of making sure our students are prepared to deal with different projects through their career, and it's not going to be the same job forever, so you have to be adaptive in your learning, but I believe that you're misunderstanding what's actually happening, and when you say we basically therefore should reduce programs emphasizing skills mastery and knowledge content, and shift to working on development of personality traits and work-study habits.
Whoa, 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 who said that?
No, this is my interpretation.
No, but who said what you just said? You said someone said that, I need to know who that is, because that's really concerning.
No.
But what you just said, I need to understand, I can't let that go. Please repeat the phrase that you just said.
My impression is that the argument that the hard skills students acquire, the knowledge content, has a very short half-life.
No, but then you said someone said somewhere that, can you just read what you just read? I, I need to understand what you said, because if someone has published somewhere or written on my staff.
I've got actual quotes, but I wasn't quoting anyone right then.
Can you read it again, though, what you said?
I said, "The main argument for this seems to be the assertion that the hard skills and content knowledge we have traditionally taught in grades K-12 have a much shorter half-life or period of usefulness due to the pace of innovation."
What, what was the next part, though?
And therefore, in quotes, and that was intended as, "That's the argument I see being made, and therefore, we should reduce programs emphasizing skills mastery and work on development of personality traits and work-study habits." Now, I know I'm going to get argument about this, I'm just outlining my impressions.
Okay, that's your impression, okay. No one said that, okay. But you only stayed for the first hour of the day that they developed this? You didn't stay for the day?
I've been following a lot of it.
But you did not stay for the day? So I just wanted the public to know.
Can I just finish off my?
That's fine, but I don't want there to be any misinterpretation of that.
My concerns, and I can be corrected, I hope I will be corrected, but I do not believe the half-life claim, the half-life claim for K-12 learning is accurate, and I don't really believe that people saying it believe it. So I want to make that clear, that I think there is a misunderstanding here, but yes, the rate of innovation is increasing, but the basic terms and tools, including essential vocabulary, mathematics, musical scales, chemistry symbols, anatomy labels, and various other hard skills needed to communicate scientific discovery and participate professionally remain fixed and enduring. K-12 literacy, history, and math courses are extremely durable and have a very long shelf life. So this is from an engineering article, which says that the half-life of school knowledge is pretty stable for 20 years. After, after 20 years, 50% of school knowledge, which is K-12, does depreciate. But we're talking about basic skills, we're not talking about a graduate seminar in epistemology. The hard, the hard skills are becoming obsolete because of the robots claim is, to my mind, a little silly, and the fact that I can use words like enduring and have it understood by an audience of members, members of an audience spanning ages eight to 80 proves my point. Core subject mastery is in crisis nationally. Large percentages of high school graduates are entering college deficient in basic skills and must waste valuable time re-enrolling remedial English and math courses once they enter college. I've heard comments at the meetings during the planning of this document emphasizing...
Pam, can I, I, I just want, I need something clarified for me, because I, I'm not, I'm missing your point when it comes to this document. Go on by all means, but could you concisely tell me what your goal is, because I'm, I'm, I'm confused, I'm sorry.
My goal is to take a look at what we're doing when we look at the portraits that we've examined from other districts. They have one little bullet here that says demonstrates mastery of academic skills. Everything else is collaboration, appreciation. Everything else is collaboration, appreciating diversity, empathy, independence, and so forth. And very little focus is being placed any longer on core content and mastery of skills and knowledge. And I've got more. I'm not finished yet.
No, 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 I understand that. I, I, I get where you're coming from. I guess, I guess what I'm still confused about is, we're looking for recommendations of this draft.
I am concerned about the fact that we don't need to worry about content mastery any longer because the robots are coming and we really only need to be nice people who can work in teams.
What's your recommendation on this draft, I guess is what I'm saying? I mean, I, I, I get what, I get the conception of what you're saying, but I, I think our, isn't our function to come up with recommendations for the draft?
I think I just made a recommendation. I, I'm pretty sure I just presented my recommendation. I'm also concerned because there are books available to be used, I assume, in a classroom to implement lessons on restorative justice, collaboration, which are geared toward reducing bullying, increasing peace, and cooperation among students, and encouraging them to become productive collaborative adults. I understand that. When you look at some of the textbooks that are out there on restorative justice and programs to encourage dialogue, tolerance, respect for diversity, and reduce bullying, some of them would raise eyebrows. And I'm just telling parents tonight that they really need to think about what the implications are of developing a secondary document. I have a slide here from a book on restorative circles, which asks students to look at privilege and oppression and white privilege. So I'm just wondering where we're going with this, that's all. I'm just a little concerned. This is from a book on restorative justice. I think we should stick to the basics and let other districts work on this model for a few years, see what happens to the curriculum, and then if we like what's happening, we could adopt it then. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of comments. I like society, and I found it interesting that the word global, one word, seven different opinions. I, I looked at this, and I remember my old basketball coach who told me I had to be globally aware of what's going on in the court. Today, it's, it's called court sense, you know? And that's bringing up a second. I, I look at this as, as what's going on around you in your, in, in your world, if you will, your surroundings, right? So maybe globally, maybe you wanna get away from that, I, I don't know. But a person should know what's going on around them, is the way I'm interpreting this. The other one I have is recognize and respect diversity. Words change, right? Today, when I hear diversity, I equate that with ethnicity. You know, we have a diverse community. We've got X number of blacks, X number of whites, X number of... And, and to me, I think what we're trying to say is recognize and respect individuality. We're all individuals, all right? Not necessarily, you know, diversity. Now, that word is gonna change. You ready for this one? It's gonna shock people. When I was younger, if I was a gay kid, I was happy. So words change over times, all right? So when you use the word diversity, who knows what that's gonna, what society's gonna interpret that down the road. So individuality, I think, will stay the same. That, that, that's that one. My last comment, and, and it has to do with resilience. And it, it, to me, you talk about constructive criticism. To me, people, and I used to see that a lot with, especially with young adolescents who are insecure anyway, you know, well, this is just constructive criticism. Oh, I'm not a good person. They take it personally. You're actually trying to help the person, but they're taking it personally. So I think maybe something in there about, you know, you know, people have a problem with taking constructive criticism as a personal slight when in reality they're trying to help you out. I know in the military, we had a real hot problem with that, but you down well better learn that for the good of the boat, you know? That nobody's picking on you because you're not a good person, or you're wrong, or whatever. No, we're trying to help you to learn and expand your knowledge, become a better person. Unfortunately, in society today, if somebody criticizes me, they're saying, "I'm not a good person." And I've got nothing to do with it. So being to accept constructive criticism without internalizing it, I think that's a skill that people should have, and I'd kinda like to see that. I hope you understand what I'm trying to say. So that's my two cents of this. Now, Superintendent, do you have a microphone?
Honestly, I'm so confused at this point. I really don't know what to say. I just think that I wanted to draw, Jim asked me earlier today when he gave me a quick call to ask some questions. He said, "How do you measure this?" And I think it's important to recognize that in our definition of student success, when we worked really hard on that for a year, we, we, I had an aha moment based on your question, and I wanted to make sure that you had the information. A lot of these things, as we work toward our student exhibitions, will be, what spawned this work was that we recognized that student exhibitions would be an important part of the definition of student success. And in student exhibitions, students should offer evidence that's individualized for a variety of these different components. Some of these are hard to measure, Jim. I'm not gonna say that they're easy things to measure. But what our vision was, was that we developed the criteria that students could be successful, such as getting a CTE credential or taking graduate courses, I mean, college courses, or getting a certain score on an SAT. But then, if you remember, at the bottom of student success, it said student exhibitions will be an important part of this. That led us to working on the Portrait of a Graduate, which would then be built into annual exhibitions throughout the K-12 experience. So it just, it took me a minute to tie it all back together to think about, for example, if you look at an effective communicator or communicator, expresses thoughts and ideas clearly, concisely, and logically through multiple modalities. If I were a student at Sandborn Regional High School, I would take a snippet of this video where I'm talking to show that I can do that and present it during my student exhibition. I would expect that students who are resilient rise to challenges and persevere in the face of obstacles. If you were my panel at my student exhibition, I would say to you, "I struggled a lot with this component of trigonometry. I couldn't get it right. I kept failing my assessments. I worked really hard on this. I persevered, and here's the evidence that I learned that material in..." Right? We have to hold kids accountable to self-evaluate, right? And Pete's point couldn't have been more on, I hate saying it, but it's true, that, 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 you know, the idea of people taking feedback constructively without being defensive is a huge problem, and I would like to see that added, Brian and Patty, that being able to take feedback in real time.
I think it's there.
Oh, which one was it? I'm sorry.
Under communicator. Says accepts and considers...
I've been so obsessed with being global, I can't even...
Says accepts and considers feedback both positive and negative.
Yeah, great. I would change negative to constructive. Because there's a difference between negative and constructive. I'm not saying that we should change it. I'm just saying let's talk about it because that's what we're here for tonight, right? Is to hear multiple perspectives and points of view and consider those because this isn't about us. I hate to say it, it's not about us. This needs to be a living document that lasts a lot longer than any of us here. Our goal is to set a foundation for this organization for the future. So the definition of student success has a clear process for student exhibitions that we've worked extensively on over the last two years and will continue to work on. And many of these areas will be a part of student exhibitions. But I wanna make sure everyone understands that there are some things that you can quantitatively evaluate. Are you at grade level at reading in the end of third grade? Can you write effectively based on a rubric that gives you clear feedback about your writing? Columbia's worked on it for 35 years. They're masters at it. Can you do basic mathematical computations? I can tell you right now, as a parent, I am absolutely frustrated that my sixth grader is still not great at his multiplication tables. It, it makes me angry to no end. And he's like, "Dad, I use my phone. I've got a calculator." I'm like, "I don't care," right? So this is an argument that's going on at my dinner table, not just your, your family's or your family's, right? We're all in this together. This is about society, about raising kids that can be successful when they self-discover who they are and what they wanna be. And I'm just gonna say for the record that, in my opinion, both are important. Both. And I will support both as superintendent. This isn't an either-or situation. We're either gonna teach them soft skills and not evaluate them, or we're gonna test them to death and, and, and go data crazy. It's not like that. It all counts. If you can't take feedback, you can't grow academically. If you can't work well in a group, you can't solve complex problems. It's not an either-or thing, guys. I, I'm just saying that for everyone's good, everybody. We have to recognize that there's balance here. Pam is 100% correct that you have to learn hard skills to be successful in the world that we live in today. 100% correct. We've talked about it at length. Jamie, you are 100% correct that you have to have core mathematical skills to be successful in the world. And I'm being really, thanks for keeping it light, but I'm being really serious right now.
No, I understand.
I need you all to hear that this isn't some kind of a move to soften things up. I don't wanna hear that. I can't do that. That doesn't work. The goal is to deal with it. The AP tests are a problem. But it's not just the teachers' faults. The kids need to do the work. We have a situation here where we need to raise our expectations. As kids come up through the system and hold them accountable for them, you cannot snap them into a grid. We have to do it over time. We have to address it. We have to. I'm not asking anyone to put their heads in the sand on anything. And I just want everyone to know, I've stayed out of this on purpose until today. This week, I let Patty pull the groups together. She's nodding her head. I didn't attend the stakeholders' meeting in August. Patty had that with parents so they could have their say, because frankly, I talk too much. You can laugh now. What, come on.
I already had that written down.
Light up. I knew you did. Yeah, yeah, I know that's gonna be, thanks, Jamie. Sometimes it helps, sometimes it doesn't, right? Blessing and a curse. But my point is that I really wanted to hear from the community what they thought was important, and I want you all to hear that what you think is important too, right? We have to figure this out together. What I'm asking for you to do is to make sure, like Tammy said, "I'm really happy to see this. I feel a lot better about it." There are things on here that I don't love, but I can live with them. We have to work on being able to live with the definition, not love. Make sure that we get things in there that are important, but you don't have to love every single aspect of it. We have to be able to live with it. So those are my thoughts, and Patty will go back and work away. And I need you all to hear, and Jim, I'm really glad that you brought up the measurability today because I'm like, "Jim, I literally said to Jim on the phone, 'You can't measure everything.'" I'm like, "What are you talking about?" And Jim's like, "Well, measuring isn't necessarily a bad thing, Tom. You know, Jim and I have these banter sometimes that are really healthy." It is. Oh, I love good coffee. But Jim and I have these banter sometimes that are really healthy, and Jim doesn't drink coffee and I do, so I talk more than he does, but he listens, helps me work it out. But he did say today, you know, "measurement isn't a bad thing." I think the question is, okay, if we wanna measure these things, how do we do it effectively? And I think those student exhibitions are gonna be a key component, and they will have to be done through the strategic planning.
And how often are those done?
Annually.
Once a year?
Well, once a year, K-12, but every time for the little kids when there's a parent, when they have parent conferences, they should be doing student-led conferences in the future, where they're demonstrating their work, and Patty's nodding her head. And you have to remember, Jim, that evidence of all of these things can be collected daily, right? The question is, how far do we, that's the strategic planning work.
Well, in that conversation, you said 50% of evaluating student needs is looking at data.
No, 50% of running an effective PLC.
Okay, is looking at data.
Is looking at data about professional learning community. And I brought you that book this evening, which, once you read it, feel free to pass it around to the team or I'll buy you a copy if anyone else would like it. But the purpose of professional learning communities is for staff to look at student data and then make strategic decisions about instruction based on that data. These things need to be discussed as part of that data, but they shouldn't trump math data, right? You have to look at both because it's symbiotic in nature. I just don't, I don't like anything that goes to extremes. It just doesn't work for me.
Well, you can tell your sixth grader that you have a board member who had that same problem. His grandmother gave him a slide rule that did the calculations for him.
Yep.
And about six months later, I realized how dumb I was and I needed to learn my multiplications because I'd been relying on that, and it doesn't work.
I just go, I went so old-school with it, Jamie will crack up. I, I give him a blank grid, fill it out. Whatever takes him more time to fill it out turns into a flashcard.
Yeah, okay.
That's the way it needs to be, and that's what Pam has talked about, so...
All right. To the draft. Suggestions, recommendations?
A couple of points.
Yep.
One is, Tom, you mentioned student exhibits for this. I had not either heard of that or didn't pick up on that in the Esa meeting, but I would request at the Esa meetings that we understand what that means. My concern would be taking an introverted child and say, "Please come and demonstrate for me your empathy. Please come and demonstrate for me your respect for diversity." Or some of these things would be difficult for a child in that situation to do that.
Bring it right to the board. The board needs to understand the student exhibitions.
Yeah. And the other thing I'd ask is Pam, if you could officially send me that information. I couldn't write fast enough to get your reference points, and I would like to better understand the details that you're referring to.
As I understand it, am I correct? This does not replace the nuts and bolts, let's call it the nuts and bolts of mathematics, history, science, right? This is a way to make sure that a Sandborn graduate has that knowledge. So it's not a, "We're using this from now on. You don't have to learn math," right? That's, that, okay, we're on TV and people can't see you. Is that a yes?
Yes.
Yes, this is not replacing anything. This is just exactly what you said.
Okay, thank you. Somebody agrees with me this...
I didn't know I was allowed to speak.
Wait, wait, wait. What's, what's the time and date? Somebody agrees with me. I gotta write this down. Okay. Now, I think we can open it up for the public. And I will say this because I try to say this every time. This is a hot topic. I understand that. Three minutes. Hopefully you understand that. And we probably, we may not respond because that's usually the practice for board members. We get along in this board, folks, let me tell you.
Just making fun of me again. It's okay.
Hi, I'm Heather Ringham. I'm from Newton. I'm actually one of the parents that was helping creating the Portrait of the Graduate. I really wanted to talk about how this really want is to enhance our children as individuals and to grow them as people. I know the global citizen, it sounds like it might be trademarked, but when we talk about citizens, we talk about citizenship, volunteers actively in your community, active in the world. You're all volunteers. I'm a volunteer. That's really what we were trying to get that point across. And when, Jim, when you talk about measuring, we measure this actually with our elementary schools' kids every day. It's cares. 90% of this is what we teach our kids in cares at Baking and Memorial. And another aspect of this, when we got those grocery lists of things, the only group that actually talked about academics was the ESLA committee. Only ones that talked about academics. The parents, the teachers, the community members, the business members. None of us, none of them really cared about the hard skills as Dr. Brown talks them. We talked more about the soft skills. I hire staff 22 to 24. I can't tell you how many of them won't answer a phone call to schedule an interview. They'll text me to schedule an interview, or they won't show up for an interview, or they don't know how to interact with people. So when we talk about how we're moving to the soft skills, they really are, our kids are struggling. It's, I recommend people read the book called iGen. It's about the iPhone generation, which these children are. They don't understand the skills that we all have learnt, and these are the things that we felt that our kids need to be successful. So I really do want to talk about the citizen, whether it's global citizen or not, but really think about that. Maybe it's citizenship or something. But being globally aware really doesn't match what we were pushing for that. So thank you for your time.
iGen, how does i space G E N?
It's called iGen. I actually have it at home. I will, I will message your dear wife, the, the author and everything.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, it's one, one word?
Yep.
It's a great book.
Hi, I'm Mary Seer from Kingston again. I took the, you always look at the clock when I come up. I, I took the, what do you call it?
Survey.
Survey, thank you. Took the survey. And as I was going through, my first impression was, why are we trying to state the obvious? This should be... why are we trying to state the obvious? This should be paramount and understood and a given for any school district. There's nothing about any of these qualities that is proprietary. If you watch Shark Tank, you're like, yeah, this is, there's nothing about this that says this is Sanborn. This is what the human race should expect of all of our citizens, all of our students, all of our children. The problem is that a lot of these things used to happen at home with parents. And as you know, a lot of the shift of what we do in our schools is taking care of these soft skills and these needs and these voids and these other things that my parents beat my backside about, you know? Because they were on me and they provided structure and discipline and love and all of those things. I was very fortunate. My kids are very fortunate that they got the same guidelines. My concern wasn't so much that it was gonna replace the hard and fast measurements that were put in place by the definition of student success. But I wanna know how this is gonna be used. I'm very glad that Dr. Haynes pointed out that this was the, a complimentary document to the existing one. Because when I first read this, I thought back to my kids' report cards, where they had the hard and fact, hard and fast results, as well as those soft things. They were all very subjective. You know, it's based on the teacher's interpretation of what does or doesn't go on in the classroom. So while I don't like that stuff, I understand it's a necessary evil. We need to be guiding these kids about stuff that they're not getting at home. We need to kinda fill that void. I don't want to see our school system become just that. Our focus here is to provide the best education possible with the resources that are given. So while I am leery that this is a non-proprietory, not, non-proprietary set of skills, I think that we're on the right track in fo, focusing on getting to the end results and measuring the outcomes and t, tracking that progress. If this is kind of a compliment to make that happen, that's fine. But as some of you may or may not know, when students apply to colleges, we have something called a, a school profile. Every school has one. It talks about, you know, what we have in our curriculum, what our schedule looks like, you know? What our students are able to achieve, what percent go on to two- and four-year colleges, what our AP scores are, if they're worth boasting about. If they're not, then maybe we won't do that. Maybe we talk about dual enrollment instead. I wanna know, how is this document, where do you see this fitting into our school profile? Is it going to supersede something? Is it gonna even appear on that? Is this just a backburner thing that helps to remind all of the stakeholders that this is what we expect of our community to do, to pull together for, for these kids and for the well-being of everybody? Or is this what we're selling as the new Sanborn? Because like I said, there's nothing about this that is measurable or obtainable or, I mean, it states the obvious. That was my first reaction. This is stating the obvious. There's not, there's no value added here for me, from my perspective. I get why you feel you have to do it, but I don't see why there's so much emphasis on it when it should be understood. I don't foresee it being a primary document, rather something maybe that supports the hard and fast data that, that suggests what we're all about and, and what our philosophies are and, and all those other things. That's all I wanted to say. I did wanna just chime in real quick on the AP stuff. Talked about, Ms. Lidle, Ms. Lidle talked about the, the K through eight and how the fundamentals are missing there. My kids all went through eighth grade here, went to different high schools, all did very well on their AP exams, so. It's multifactorial.
Hello, Tammy Gluck from Newton again. So I replied to the survey when this came out back in August, and it's nice to see the, um, process that's, that's been, we've gone through in developing this. It was really helpful for me to hear Dr. Haynes's explanation of how you look at this, and, and I know, Mary, you had some questions about that, and I think your analogy there with the genes and the external, which is what the portrait is, and the internal is what the definition of student success is. You can't really always see that, but you can see a portrait of somebody. And I, I think that's what, at least it's my interpretation of that's what we're trying to do with this is, is what do we want the world to see when we have a Sanborn graduate? So, um, and the fact that it's going to work in tandem in developing strategic planning, budgeting, and curriculum and instruction helps me to better understand why this is, is being taken on and, and looked at by the board. So, that being said, I, I'm, my first thought when I took the survey was, we should have something about academic preparedness, preparedness, blah, in, in there. So I'm glad to see that's there. I'm a little concerned about a couple of things that fell out, and, um, it's under creates and maintains healthy relationships, which is in the middle section under communication. The youth risk behavior survey that our students take here at the high school is a, to me, a big indication of why that should be left in there. So I think Mr. Stack, Heidi Levitt, superintendent, can all bring you up to speed on those results and why having something about relationships is really important as a portrait of a graduate. That's one comment. And we, at the outset of this meeting, the board got to improve, uh, approve a trip to France. We want our students to be globally aware citizens, and maybe that's what we add. A globally aware citizen. We want them to be globally aware whether they're in Kingston, Newton, Boston, UNH, wherever they're gonna be, beyond Sanborn, in their workplace, and I, I think that is something that we wanna foster here at Sanborn Regional School District, so that's my comment.
Hi, I'm Crystal Brown from Newton. I know a lot of these seem to us like the obvious things that people should have and know and be. I happen to be a union steward where I work, and the more, I, they make me feel old, the younger generation coming in and asking me questions and bringing issues they have, because if they're confronted with opposition, it's not, "Oh, okay, I need to do my job. I need to take this. I need to build. I need to grow." It's, someone said something bad to me. Like, the instincts just aren't our instincts anymore, and it's changing, and this generation kinda needs to be pushed back in that direction. The things that we do naturally, that, they're human to us. It's not to them anymore. So that's why, even though it's obvious to us, they make me feel old, and it's not so obvious.
Hi, Annie Collier, Newton. I really appreciated Dr. Haynes's prefacing remarks, saying that this is to be used together with the definition of student success in developing the strategic, strategic plan. And I'm hopeful that when the school board works on the strategic plan and, and puts it together, that you put in the measurements at that point and what the parameters are, both academically and, um, as far as some of these soft skills go. And I don't know how it relates to the projects, but it's gonna be a challenge, but I think it's one that you guys are up to. I saw that lifelong learning habits kinda moved around in various places, and I really like it under academics, so I was glad about that. I'm really happy to see personally responsible. I think that in our world today, taking personal responsibility is, A, extremely important, and B, often missing. Everybody wants to blame, play blame games or shame games, and being, um, responsible is just a really important thing for kids, for a positive thing, and for adults, all members of our community. I agree with the comments on, uh, that Tammy just made about, uh, relationships, and I'd suggest that maybe that could go into the, um, the area of the citizenship. That, that would be a good place, and I'd really like to see a citizen as opposed to globally aware. Globally aware is a little amorphous, and citizen is a member of a community. It's a member of a school district. It's a member of a family. It's a member of a country. It's a member of the world. So, um, being a citizen, I think, takes out any, uh, possible political overtones and still covers what was said, and, um, appreciated Heather's statements that that was kinda where it came from in the beginning. I think Tom's comment about, no, Pete's comment about diversity is right on, um, you know, really good to have that. The word, and the feedback, I'd like to suggest that positive feedback is also something that people shouldn't always listen to. Positive feedback can be, "Ah, you're such a great person! Attaboy!", and it's meaningless. I'd like to see constructive. Just not, neither positive nor negative, but just constructive feedback. And I think that's all I had to say, but thank you very much for all the work that's going into this, and we'll continue to go into it. I know this is just kind of chapter one, so, thank you.
Hi, I'm Kyle Sucey from Kingston, and I just wanted to say that I really appreciate all the work that went into this. As a parent, um, what it means to me is that you care. You care about what's going to happen after they leave you, which is huge. And there are concerns, um, that I have as a parent with two kids in the elementary schools. You know, what's gonna happen afterwards? Are they prepared for the world? That's what we all care about, and you know, I don't know what's gonna happen with this. I don't know how you're going to use this going forward, but just know that right now, I love that you're doing this. I love that you're spelling this out, that you're putting the work into, what do you really want our students to be able to do in life and, and when they leave this, um, this district? Just to wor, just to note that, um, when I took the survey, one of the thing that, things that really, um, worry me or concern me is what I'm hearing from some of the students now. So we have some babysitters that are high school students, some that have graduated previously, and I would ask them, you know, "Our kids are gonna be in the high school. What do you think of the high school?" Um, and what I hear a lot, eh, that worries me is that they're not prepared for college, that they go to that first semester, and they don't know how to study. They don't know how to really, um, they, they just felt they were very unprepared going into it, and that they floundered either the first year. So that, that does concern me. And then also, um, which I found very interesting, one that was actually sending out, um, uh, applications to schools, that their, uh, I forget what you call it, a transcript just wasn't understood, that the grading system here is not what the grading system is out in a lot of other places, and that is really hard on just getting into college. So those were two things that I put in the survey, just wanted to, to voice here, but I just really love this. For me personally, side note, global aware, I have no problem with the term. I, I just love to s, that it says recognizes and respects diversity. There's just not enough of that in the world now, and I'm just glad to see it on there. Thank you.
Cheryl Gannon from Kingston. One of my concerns in the district has long been, um, when you look back at the history of how our community, um, has not been great supporters of our school budgets and our teacher contracts, is that we don't have a common vision of what we want outcomes to be for our students. Certainly, academics is something that needs to be stressed, that I believe is stressed, and that has made great progress over the years. There used to be something called the Sanborn A. It was kind of a nebulous thing that didn't seem to, uh, match up to expectations for our students going to college. I really hope that, um, it was mentioned, um, I think a couple of meetings ago, um, about tracking our students after they get to college. They may get to college, but do they stay? Do they complete their college education? And I think a lot of these things that are listed here are very important to that being able to stay in college, because they're on their own. You know, they leave the protective, uh, cocoon that we give them here, and we need to be able to teach them those independent skills. I think this is a wonderful vision. I don't know how achievable it is. Uh, uh, who teaches these skills? Who monitors the kids to make sure that they're getting these skills? Are all of our staff participating in teaching these skills? If a student is not meet, meeting these goals, what happens then? Is there some kind of safety net? How are these things measured? I'm also a measure person. And it may not be able to, um, be measured with a number, but I think there should be some way that we look at and make sure that kids are not falling through cracks or having something that will help kids who are having difficulty meeting these wonderful goals. I do also like the word citizen, because I think we need to teach kids to give back to their community. And I think we're, the world that we're in today is, is a very consumption-oriented, oriented world, and I think kids need to appreciate what's being given to them and to give back. I like the idea of student exhibitions and annually having kids practice communicating. Communication is so key in our world today. But again, I'm concerned about who's teaching these skills? Are all the teachers trained to look for these wonderful goals that we hope all of our students will achieve? Do they all promote these skills? And again, if they're not being that, what do we do? Is there some kind of a plan? I hope that this does get, um, viewed by the community and that people continue to have input. I agree with the superintendent that it all counts. It's not just those hard skills. You need to be able to work in a community and work with others and collaborate to be successful. Just a little grammatical thing. Hate to say this, but well-being stays in there. Please put the hyphen in.
Well. Hang on, we've still got another citizen here.
Oh, sorry.
Taryn Lidle, Kingston. So just to help, uh, some people that are having a little trouble understanding how you measure soft skills, like, just gonna pick some out here, accountable for thoughts and actions, applies critical thinking and problem solving, thinks originally and independently, collaborates effectively, recognizes and respects diversity, communicates effectively, expresses thoughts and ideas clearly, views mistakes as opportunities for growth. So here's how you measure those. Those are measured by the number of discipline referrals to the administration. Those are measured by the number of absences. Those are measured by the number of class disruptions. Those are measured by increased academic time on task. Those qualities are measured by teacher satisfaction and staff red, um, pfft, spit it out, retention. Those are measured by a reduction in parent complaints. Those are measured by a reduction in guidance referrals. That is how those types of soft skills are measured. Very measurable. Not with a little test, but with all of those things that I mentioned. And the wonderful thing is if all of those things are affected positively by doing these soft skills, what does that equal? That equals increased academic time on task and higher academic achievement, which is really the goal here. So hopefully that clarifies that for some people who are a little confused how soft skills affect academics. Looking at this, um, I think it's fine. I will say, putting on my grumpy hat, I think less is more. I think this is too long. I think, um, schools in general are really excellent at having committees and coming up with really long explanations for things. Look at our report card. Look at our handbook. Look at our policy manual. Less is more. I think all of these are wonderful things. I think all of these are wonderful things. Shrink it down and make it like 50% shorter, so it's actually consumable. Thank you.
Put me in a bit of a bind here, Jim.
Why's that?
Because the school board has had their moments to comment, then we went to the public, now you may say something that another school board member wants to rebut or say something, and now the public may want to say something based on what you or some members in the school board may say, so.
Well, maybe not.
I agree, but as I say, you put the chair in a bit of a bind here, because you had your time to say, and then the public had their time to say, and now you really want to go back to the beginning. How about this? If it's something that hasn't been said, and I'm going out a little, a little bit here too, because I'm probably going to shut somebody down, you know, fine, but just so you understand where the chair's coming from on this, you know? So quickly and concisely, and hasn't been brought up before.
I appreciate that.
No, you see, you see the problem, right? Yeah.
I just want to address the idea that the taxpayers in Newton and Kingston are not generous in sometimes not voting for budgets or for contracts. And if you look at our cost per student.
Excuse me, excuse me, Jim, I'm sorry.
Compared to surrounding towns, they have been extremely generous.
Jim!
Thank you.
What has that got to do with this draft?
It has to do with the public comment.
What has got to do with this draft? And when I say Jim as chair, I want you to stop. I don't like gabbling people, all right?
You asked me a question.
The question must be on the agenda and must be on the subject we're discussing, and that was not the subject that we are discussing, this draft.
It was on the public comment.
We don't answer public comments by rule. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we are fine. He's a good friend of mine, I'm a good friend of his. Friends can have disagreements, don't worry about it.
It's not personal.
We're still going to argue about who's paying for the coffee after this meeting. Okay.
95 cents, which is how much your budget was raised. I've heard.
I believe that concludes this, right? Right? It's going to be sent back to Dr. Haynes, you're going to rework it, you're going to come back to us, and we can have another night of this.
I can't wait. It was fun.
All right. So that, I'm going to, that's the second public comment, is there anything other than this draft that somebody wanted to talk about that we didn't talk about? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, would you please thank Ms. Haynes and Mr. Stack accordingly?
Yes, well, we, we, a lot of people did, but you're right, the chair should say, you did a yeoman's job on this, and we do definitely appreciate it, all right? So, thank you very good, time out.
I don't have a comment, I have a question.
Yep.
Is the capital, I was reading old minutes, the capital improvement plan, is that on the website, or has it been approved, or where can I find it?
It's not there yet, it will be.
Because there's a link in the minutes and it doesn't go to anything.
Okay, let Phyllis, Phyllis can check on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Matt's not here tonight to help with that, and I don't know, I don't want to say the wrong thing and then have that become gospel. Like, Matt, Matt Angel's handling that, so I'm sure he can help you out with that. If you could just send him an email, that'd be great. He'll be back Monday.
Okay. Here we go, next meeting agenda. We'll figure that out, all right?
Budget, next meeting agenda is.
Oh, you've said that already.
The budget, and, and before the board meeting, we're starting early that night, so please plan accordingly, we are having the, a presentation about Choose Love, which I will send out to you. It's the presentation for the community about the resilience and social and emotional stuff, which you'll all love very much. It's going to be awesome. Patty will send you a summary.
When you say it early, how early?
Oh, like 2:30. No, I, I, Patty, what time does the Choose Love presentation start at the next, is that the next meeting?
5 o'clock, December 4th.
Oh, I'm sorry, not November, December.
Yeah, we don't have a meeting, next two meetings, because we happen to have an extra week.
Right, we have the board, the budget meetings are in November, I apologize, I'm a month ahead of myself.
Is that going to be the 4th or the 6th, Patty?
No, no, it's December 4th. I got a month ahead of myself, I'm sorry.
All right, here we go. The next school board, the next Sanborn Regional School Board meeting will be a joint meeting with the Budget Committee to be held on Wednesday, November 6th, from 5? No, from 6? It's still 6?
No, it's still 6. It's December that it's earlier, I apologize.
All right, that's all right, okay. From 6:00 to 9:00 PM in the library at Sanborn Regional High School, 70 Danby Road, Kings, New Hampshire, and can I have a motion for a non-public?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we go into non-public session per RSA 91-A:3-Roman numeral 2.
Second?
Second.
Hi.
Hi. Ellie.
If I have to.
Yes, unanimous. Let's take a couple of minutes while Jim and I shake hands.